I'm here today with Geoff Hart and Lucian Ferrelli. And they are two candidates in our upcoming, very soon, three weeks away, election in New London for City Council. And they are candidates who will speak to anyone and everyone in the public, including me and here. So, thanks for coming in.
Of course, yes.
So, I guess there was an article in yesterday's paper, was it? I think that the candidates for both City Council and Board of Ed were asked a question about the rift between this council and Board of Ed, which is not new, although to me, the kind of ironic part is everyone's in the same party, and there's still a rift. And, I don't know, my, I guess I wanted you to talk a little bit more about what's happening with the school budget, which seems to be a flashpoint for a lot of other tensions that haven't gotten so much publicity. And what is the story? I think both of you might be a little closer to the issue than most of the viewers. And either of you can start.
Yeah, I can start. So, I got involved because I was the AM, still the Union Secretary for the Teachers' Union, which is New London Education Association. And we were following the money, following the budget. Essentially, what happened is, based on what the mayor wanted, Mayor Pasaro, he suggested to the City Council that they should give us a 0% increase. This is after contractual raises have been approved. Our new contract had been sitting in City Hall for at least a month. And they had every opportunity to read through it. Whether they did or not, I don't know. I know Geoff was on, and still is, on City Council, so maybe he can speak to that. But I just have a feeling that some of them didn't read it, and they kind of just went along with what the mayor said. And fact of the matter is, the basic math, or basic arithmetic, as I put in the day article blurb, is that if you increase the salaries of teachers, paraprofessionals, any school employee, and that is approved by the City Council, that money should be allocated into the Board of Education budget. And it wasn't. And a flat fund means 0% increase, and that means we're gonna have to cut, or Board of Ed is gonna have to cut. And they had to cut a lot. And it was also not just from teachers, which is a common misconception. There was at least five administrator positions that were cut as well. So, it was brutal. I mean, at my school, I work at Nathan Hale, we lost media arts. And that was near and dear to my heart as an arts teacher. I'm a music teacher. And David Moore, who taught that class, is also the Union President, ironically. But that's where I came from, is from the Union perspective, the Union standpoint. One thing led to another, and now, you know, as an activist, I ended up in the Green Party position as well. And so, I'm happy to be here. And Geoff, maybe you can elaborate on some of the points I raised.
Absolutely. And, you know, I guess thanks to John Penny for asking the question to everybody. And thanks, Rana, for giving us the platform to discuss it here. You know, I was on the Board of Ed for three terms before joining the council, so I've seen both sides of this rift. And to a certain extent, you know, the system is set up with the possibility that it could become adversarial. There are two separate bodies for a reason. So, part of this is, you know, we haven't been set up for success. There are conflicting and competing interests, just in the structure of it. But that doesn't account for the actual human relationships. And like, you know, to work together, to cooperate, you have to have trust. At least, you know, trust that the process is gonna be fair, that your concerns are gonna be taken seriously. Not, you know, not trust that you're gonna get your favorite outcome, but that you're gonna be treated fairly. And I think that's where trust has been damaged. So, pitting it as both sides have an issue with each other doesn't strike me as true. You know, they're not co-equal branches of government. One of them has the power of the person, one of them does not. So, one of them is always coming hat in hand, begging. And, you know, in my experience as a board member, councillors are quick to remind board members that they're sort of lesser than. And, you know, they do talk down to you.
Hey, they get a stipend!
Right? They do talk down to board members, whether they know they're doing it or not. Maybe, you know, those who served on the board are a little more sensitive to that. But it's, you know, if it was just little slights like that, I think the board members would suck it up, come back next year, and hat in hand ask. Again, that's what they were used to doing for years and years and years. But the administration makes it difficult. Even if you want to be an honest, fair city councillor, if you're getting all of your information from the Pasaro administration, you're gonna get his bias. And he is strongly biased against the school system. He has never met a superintendent that he got along with or liked. You know, he has said some really nasty things in private, closed-door meetings to our superintendent. And, you know, that stuff does damage relationships. And the council sort of has a contagious effect, where they are repeating some spurious accusations that the board members don't appreciate, or, you know, sort of pantomiming these biases. And, you know, I think it's totally up to the city to repair that relationship. That is, you know, that is, the city broke it, the city has to fix it. And by fix it, I don't just mean you have to give them everything they want. That is not what anyone has ever demanded. Don't confuse me asking for what we need for me expecting that I'm gonna get everything I wanted in a negotiation. But like, don't, you can't look at the school system and say, hey, don't tell me what you need. What you need is offensive to me. That big number scares me, it makes my job difficult, it makes me look like I don't want to help you because of the big gap that you're handing me. I don't appreciate it. Well, are you asking the school system to lie about the true cost of educating students? It sounds like it. Right? That's not fair to ask. It's not fair to sort of make them your enemy for presenting their case, and they're not being treated fairly. And until they are treated fairly, you know, trust can't be reestablished.
Can I just back up something that you said? Because when I first became a teacher, I spent the first seven years of my teaching career in Norwich. From my very first year as a teacher, I was already a Union rep. I was very active right away. But even as politically involved as I was, I still had the common misconception that the Board of Ed called the shots with the money. Like, I just, for some reason, I just missed it. And it is such a common misconception with the public, where I, you know, what you're, to your point, you know, you have to go begging for the money. And when I was a Union rep in Norwich, I remember seeing my job get cut. Now, I was still tenured, I still had a full-time job at the elementary, but the preschool part of my job was cut by the board, because they were trying to save a little bit of money to, so that they had band. I'm not gonna get into all that. But I remember being furious at the Board of Ed. Furious at the Board of Ed in Norwich. And I, I just didn't see that next step, that deeper layer, which is that they did not have the control at all. You know, it's sad. I don't want to say they don't have any control, I don't want to say, absolve them from everything. What I'm saying is that, to your point, City Council 100% has the control of the numbers that they get for the money. And the superintendent is the one who calls the shots as far as what gets cut, for the most part, for the most part. Now, the Board of Ed can step in and challenge that, of course they can, but that's generally how it works. And again, me being that involved and having that misconception, I know that this is something that is really misunderstood by the public.
And I served one term on Board of Ed 15 years ago. And the one thing, takeaway point, looking at the budget for me was hardly any of it is discretionary.
That's right. That's exactly right.
You really, like, maybe have 5% that you can play around with, but maybe not even that much if a child with a lot of special needs moves into the district. Well, that's all your extra, if there was any extra. And I think viewers might not also know that flat funding is the lowest the city can go legally in Connecticut. They cannot actually give you a lower dollar amount, but...
Correct. So... In Pasaro's recent opinion piece, he is finally being transparent about the fact that he's mostly concerned about the minimum budget requirement going up. He sees that as sort of like a uncontrolled slippery slope, that if we ever give them an increase, they always get an increase. And it's like, well, there's a reason the state made that law. And it's because towns like this and mayors like that would give less and would cut without adjusting the base. And the law doesn't even say you can never deduct money from the school's budget. It just says that it has to be based on actual, like, changes in enrollment or buildings. If you sell off a building and your enrollment is much reduced, you can apply for a waiver of that rule and reduce the budget one time. But, you know, why is the opposite not true? Why is it the fact that when we add a school building, we don't automatically readjust the basis for what our minimum budget requirement was last year? Well, I guess the school is supposed to eat that expense out of some other operational category.
Or again, when you approve contractual raises, shouldn't there be some kind of rule where that money, if you, if the City Council approves it, gets automatically allocated to the Board of Ed? I mean, it would make sense, but it's, I know that that's not how it's written.
These are fixed costs.
Yeah.
And anyone who's suggesting that they, you know, all we need to do to solve this budget problem is to run it like you would a business. Well, I think anyone who actually has made a, you know, project budget, or has allocated resources to a project, and informally, knows that you're up against a wall. There are some things you can't cut, you know? And if they looked at our budget, they would see that it's mostly things that are fixed. There's not a lot of wiggle room there.
Right.
And I think there's a deeper misconception too, because, so I was a preschool teacher, and if anything, like, we're, we were in much worse shape than public school teachers even. I participated in many unsuccessful union drives. And, but, so I'm a fan of Art Rolnik, the economist. I don't know if anyone but early childhood people know Art Rolnik, but he was a Vice President of the Minneapolis Federal Reserve for many years, the Director of Development. And he had very interesting views on economic development. He believed that giving subsidies to businesses was the wrong way to do it, that it doesn't actually develop anything. And this was his field of expertise. And that all it did was move businesses from one place to another and put towns in bidding wars, that it actually doesn't, there isn't much return on the investment, and there can be a loss on the investment. So, when asked, so if this is the wrong way to do economic development, which we do, and most towns in Connecticut do, you know, we give all these subsidies to developers, what's the right way? And he said, invest in your human capital, and especially preschool education, and early elementary education, and particularly in populations where the kids have a lot of needs.
Well, people should see that as a return on investment.
It is, yeah.
The problem is, is that, for some reason, New London specifically, and it's their freedom of choice, I get it, but a lot of people choose private schools, charter schools, you know, Catholic schools, and that's their freedom to choose that. I'm not trying to say they shouldn't. But you're paying twice when you do that, you know? I mean, I'm not talking about like, you know, the multicultural magnet school, or Isaac, where you're not gonna have to pay a fee. But some of these other private schools, they're paying already for schools and their tax dollars, and then they're paying again. And to me, they're not thinking about the fact that they're making that investment to really have that return on investment. They should, instead of abandoning the public school system, they should be more involved in the public school system and try to make it what they envision, try to make it better. If you want more, you know, real-life experiences, if you want more life skills taught, and those types of things, then enroll your kids in public school and get involved in the PTO. And that's just my opinion. And again, it's their freedom if they don't want to do that. I'm not, I'm not trying to talk down on them, but you're paying twice, you know? And that's, that's how I see it anyway.
And of course, the school, the public school system is subsidizing those private schools with transportation and nursing and special education costs.
Yep.
So, those private schools are offloading some of their operating costs onto the public system and the city taxpayers.
And some of that is state law as well.
Someone who talks about the per pupil expenditure at these schools, it's like, well, you're not comparing apples to apples. We're paying extra for your students over there on our budget over here.
And Geoff, you probably remember the school nurse fiasco of like, maybe seven or eight years ago.
Which year? We've had several of them.
Yeah. I think I'm thinking about 2016-ish.
I'm being a little facetious, because when I first ran for the Board many, many years ago, I was still hearing about it on the doors from the first time that the suggestion came up. And then it did come up again recently.
Oh, it's back?
Well, it was a controversy with, you know, you can talk to Elaine about it when she comes on.
Oh, yeah.
As Board President, you know, she, you know, did ask Williams School to provide their own nurse. Williams said that they were not going to do that. And, you know, they went back and forth a little bit. As I understand it, the mayor and the city has assured Williams School that they will get the nurse per state law. And, you know, that, that's always been the case. I think there's a little bit of brinksmanship in politics. So, you know, if people think we're behaving ridiculously and treating this like a game, well, to a certain extent, like, it is a game, and the stakes are very high, and you must win it. You're not, you know, like, I hate to put it like that, but I'm a pragmatist. And if people are going to, you know, gamify something, then sometimes that, it looks silly, but that's what you have to do to be effective. So, I don't, I don't, don't take every single statement your politician makes literally, but do take them seriously.
And I will say, like, the law is the law. Like, if we have to provide nurses, you know, we have to provide nurses. But it doesn't mean that it's right. You know, it's, the law is the law, we have to do it. But at the same time, the fact that public money is getting funneled out of the public is a problem.
That is a problem. And the problem seven or eight years ago was that St. Joe's wanted a full-time nurse with 150 students, when the public schools had a full-time nurse in their schools with 450 or 500 students. And they were not happy at, I think, the Board's solution, which was to have Williams and St. Joe's share in nurse.
Part-timers, yeah.
Yeah.
Which did meet the statutory requirement, but they weren't happy about that.
And actually, it provided parity with what the public school kids were getting as well, more or less.
Yeah. Yeah, when you think about it per capita, yeah.
When you think of it, yeah, how many students are being served. Maybe not hours of the day being served, but per student. So, it isn't just education though, because, you know, Public Works is, I feel as though, and I don't know if it's just New London, but it certainly is New London, there's sort of a hierarchy of departments. And I, I think, I don't know, several years ago, 2018 or something, I was looking at the budget. And for the fire department, there was a little blurb on, you know, before each department's budget. And the fire department was basically boiled down to, oh, we'll fund the fire department, make sure they have the staffing, the equipment, the training, so they can do a great job. And the police department was sort of like that too. We'll give them the, oh, an adequate number of people, adequate staffing. And the police department was kind of the same thing. It's like, you know, our goal is to have adequate, you know, staffing, training, and equipment to do a great job. And Public Works, I think I printed it somewhere, I didn't bring it with me, but Public Works was something like, oh, we'll do the best we can with the, you know, while being as efficient as possible. And, and that is in practice, you know, I talk to Public Works people a lot. And there are five people under George to do grounds work in the city. And, you know, they just can't do it. So, the city is highly dependent on volunteer groups, volunteer individuals and groups, beautification, trees, all the parks conservancies, all the citizens that just do stuff, because that is one great thing about New London, is something needs to be done, you can just do it, and no one will, you know, bat an eyelash.
Like Bates Friends Forever, like, taking care of Bates Woods, when really that's something that the city should really do, in my opinion.
Oh, yeah. And, well, and then with the solar field, well, we could go on the whole thing of why, why we don't have solar panels over our parking lots and our buildings. It seems like kind of a fad to put them over open space, and it's, it's such a poor idea from anything but the initial dollar amount. You can save a few bucks, and you end up with a problem forever.
Yep.
You know, a few years ago, I asked if they could provide solar panels over my school, Nathan Hale, and they're worried about a certain neighbor because of a lawsuit. So, that stuff, we're not gonna get into that right now.
No, we're not gonna get into that.
But I will say that it's unfortunate when there's this counter-narrative to what we're talking about going on. And most of it is like a, like a social counterpoint, or cultural counterpoint to what we're, to what we're talking about, you know, wanting sustainability, wanting public funds to be, you know, given back to us, return on investment, and all that stuff. Unfortunately, like, and I didn't really learn this till recently, that there's such a counter-narrative in New London, you know? It's unfortunate. Because when I first moved to New London, I definitely saw more of the positives. I saw more of the, what you're talking about, the organizations, the local organizations that are cleaning up the parks, and the people that are trying to do the right thing. It's just unfortunate that there are those people out there trying to stop this progress. But anyways, Geoff, you got anything to add to that? I don't, I know I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty too much on that topic, but...
As far as, you know, we're a couple of degrees into the weeds from Public Works, and, but I do agree that Public Works is a forgotten department. It's a place where they keep coming back to for savings. And if you ask the people that are out there now, you know, they are, they are struggling. You know, you can't name names, because you fear retaliation from the administration, right? But if they gave an honest accounting of how difficult it is, I think they'd have a different budget scenario. One of the things that, you know, I think happens when you have city directors, this is gonna lead into the Charter, we're gonna talk about Charter.
I've got a little note here, so we're on the same page on that.
That don't meet all the requirements of the Charter, then they end up serving at the pleasure of the mayor, who then has sort of undue influence over them, right? And so, if the mayor says, don't present me a budget that gives, you know, that is more than this amount, and you actually need more than that amount to do your job, you're not gonna present that budget to him. You know, where, and I think he's used to dealing with that, because just about all of his directors have gotten some kind of waiver of one kind or another. And I think he expects the superintendent to do the same thing. And that's not, you know, that's not how that works. She answers to the Board of Ed, not to him. So, you know, there's no, you know, we're gonna lie about the cost of our enterprise here. Yeah, Public Works, they just let a whole bunch of people go by retirement. It did have to be bargained and negotiated, the Union did sign off on it. But in my opinion, it's an unfortunate loss of some very experienced individuals that kept our town running. And it's something we're not gonna easily recover from, even if we hired people tomorrow, which we don't have the budget for this year. It's gonna be a long time till they replace the level of experience that walked out the door last year.
And I have to say, as someone who volunteers on some of this stuff, that the city also does not really treat its volunteers that well. And to be, to be so dependent on volunteers to pick up the slack is not sustainable.
Yeah.
I mean, I, yeah, I do a lot of planting, because I do a lot of planting. But, you know, I'm 76 years old, I'm not gonna be planting forever. And I see that a lot of the volunteers, you look at the beautification committee, and I'm probably younger than most of them, and it's just, it's not sustainable at all. And we wouldn't be asking the fire department or the police department to function in that kind of situation. And I just want to add one other thing about Public Works. I don't know this for sure, but strongly suspect that it is the department that has most New London residents working for it.
I, you know, I hadn't thought to do a survey of that, but you could very well be right. I'm not sure, yeah.
Yeah. So, they're the ones who are, their salary is going to pay property taxes in New London to live here.
To not make the city, yeah, good point.
Definitely something to look into, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be really interested. And I think, just in general, we don't really know some of what's happening in the city that we should know. On a totally, you know, different subject, you know, there's, you know, the affordable housing event going on on Saturday. And I think council or someone should require landlords to give a report quarterly, how many of their spots are filled, and how many vacancies they have. Because we can't really tell what, whether there's a matchup or not between what our families need and what housing is available.
Yeah.
Yeah, how affordable is our affordable housing? That's, that's the other part, you know? I'm running for City Council for the first time, I'm new to all this, like, part of that question is very sincere.
Yeah. And just to answer it straightforwardly, like, the word affordable is actually kind of a important term of art. Because the state has a definition of affordability, which I believe is 75% of the median income, and that it wouldn't take up more than a certain percentage of your income going to housing if you were at that level for your family. So, it's a little formula they use. And by that definition, a lot of places are affordable that people in our community can't actually afford.
Right.
On our actual median income. Because in New London, the median income is much, much lower than the statewide average. It's like, I want to say around 35 locally, and around 60 statewide, 60, something like that. And, you know, that's, that's almost double. That's, that might be affordable in Simsbury, it's not affordable in New London, you know?
Right.
So, we actually need to talk about income-based housing, and we need to talk about rent control, and we need to talk about public housing. These dirty words that you can't say.
Or rent freezes, which is another, that's spooky.
Doesn't Germany call it social housing?
Yeah. People are afraid of anything.
Sounds better than, it doesn't have the stigma the public housing as a term comes from.
Let's name it happy housing. How about that?
But there used to be...
Whatever you call it, they're gonna call you a pinko for suggesting it, and that's fine.
Right.
Because we need it.
We need it.
Yeah. But the other thing is, you know, before we, we lived in New London, we could not afford a house till we were in our 40s, because we didn't work in military jobs intentionally. That was a large part of it. And we had not an official affordable rental, but it was a cheap rental compared to what's considered, you know, officially affordable. And we rented a winterized beach cottage in Pleasure Beach. It was a terrible house, had no right angles, the wind kind of went through it. have the stigma the public housing as a term comes from.
Let's name it happy housing, how about that?
But there used to be...
Whatever you call it, they're going to call you a pinko for suggesting it, and that's fine.
Right.
Because we need it.
We need it.
Yeah. But the other thing is, you know, before we, we lived in New London, we could not afford a house till we were in our 40s, because we didn't work in military jobs intentionally. That was a large part of it. And we had not an official affordable rental, but it was a cheap rental compared to what's considered, you know, officially affordable. And we rented a winterized beach cottage in Pleasure Beach. It was a terrible house, had no right angles, the wind kind of went through it. It was barely a hun, a thousand, yeah, barely a thousand square feet. It was, but you know what? We lived there for 15 years and it was perfect. You know, our rent was $300 a month when we moved in in 1979, and $600 a month in 1994 when we moved out. And that kind of housing isn't really much, available much anymore.
Right. I think something that, this is maybe out of left field, but I spoke with you a little bit about it. I think it was, you know, our, one of, one of the state reps, local state reps, not for New London, but Nick Metapace, you know, over East Line, had posted that there were, there was a tenants' union that had formed in East Line. And I think, you know, to try to be able to negotiate their rent, and I think that is a, a great approach. But I think when I spoke to you about it, you informed me that, well, it's, it's building to building, which makes it challenging. It's a great ideal, it's something that we could definitely aim for, but I think that's one possible solution.
Yeah, hopefully for those that want to come to this event on Saturday at 1:00, that's the 18th of October at 1:00, 1:00 PM in Williams Park on Broad Street, next to Dunkin' Donuts there. I'm hoping that Trina Charles will be able to join us and speak a little bit about tenant organizing, because she is one of the, the main voices that has been trying to, to do that work here. And she has experience with some of these other nearby tenants' unions.
Awesome.
Yeah. That is a challenge, getting a building organized.
Right.
Because you may want to form a tenants' union, and, you know, you may have like-minded folks, but that doesn't necessarily mean they live in the same building as you, so you can't necessarily organize together.
Right.
It is unfortunate.
It is an unfortunate situation. And there are so many pieces about, like, why housing has gotten the way it has, but I, I think it's kind of the same thing that's happened to a lot of other things that are human needs, they've gotten commodified. There is some shareholder making money off of it. And there are places that have legislated that, you know, if a landlord moves out, then the tenants get the first dibs on buying from them.
Yes. There are so many solutions that we haven't tried. There's, and it's going to take a lot of them, it's going to, we, there's a menu of at least a dozen or two dozen solutions that we could try. But the only one that we have tried is tax abatements to market rate developers.
Yeah, that's not great.
And every so often, there's a couple of affordable apartments, but not very often. The one on, on, on Green Street, the church conversion, I think, is going to have two out of 11 apartments be affordable, something like that, because of, but, yeah, it's mostly market rate, and we really have not made demands of the developers that many other municipalities have.
I mean, so, just to, you know, piggyback off what you're saying about there being so many solutions, possible solutions, shout out to my catchphrase here, is the solution. Anyways.
Yes, this is the battle of the puns.
Oh, battle of the puns, gotta have it.
We need Aaron here with his eye.
Well, we're both dads, so, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of dad jokes.
A lot of dad jokes.
But anyway, so, the thing is, is that I, I feel like there's just lack of creativity with some of the people on council, that have been on council at least the past year, and also with the mayor. I mean, this, the letter that he had written on Sunday, you know, besides the fact that he rearranged some of the numbers, which I, you know, addressed in my rebuttal on my Facebook page, you can look it up if you want. But besides that, it's just the fact that he's saying that this is the one way it has to be, I'm not going to look at any other possible solutions. And that is a problem. And you, we have to have creative thinkers in office. We have to have people that are innovative thinkers, that are willing to be outside of the box. And you know what? If you have 12 ideas and 11 of them don't work, you know, the 12th one might work. So we got to try them, we got to try, we can't just give up, you know? There's this like, level of apathy that's just kind of floating and resonating.
That's right. Shamefully, you know, some of our candidates last year, specifically the other Democrats, you know, and as you know, I'm, I'm cross endorsed on, on multiple party lines, but the other Democrats on the slate two years ago wouldn't show up at a debate to discuss these ideas. And I think that sort of speaks volumes. Some of them are still refusing to do that today. Some of them won't answer questions to the newspaper or show at a debate where these solutions are being discussed. And if you don't have discussion, we're not going to get anywhere. It's, it's not, you know, that one solution is going to work and we just have to convince the mayor to do it. We have to have continuous community input. Our elected officials need to hear from the public, in public and in private, in committees and in forums. And, you know, they need to show up for that conversation.
Right.
Okay.
That's like a duty.
We have a picture of, a slide of the ballot. It was released, posted last week finally, and you can get a look at, at the candidates. And you see that Jeff is on three lines, and someone named Hartman is on the fourth.
They did the same thing with Rich Martin and John Martin.
Yeah.
Just got to say.
There were some weird funny quirks with the ballot this year.
I actually missed John Martin for a while. Sorry, John, I missed you for a while, because I just saw you right under Rich's name, you know? If you're watching, you might not be, but...
Yeah.
It is a funny looking ballot.
It is a fun ballot. Elaine did not draw a, I mean, she'll be fine, but she's really in that corner, but...
Well, it's like a wall now, because she's on three as well, so.
Yeah.
She's got the wall.
I refuse to believe it's random.
It's just too weird. I was there, it looked random, but, you know...
No, I genuinely do.
I think it's a constellation, it's a constellation if you connect them all.
Yeah. It's a really, not really quite symmetrical, but it, yeah, it's an interesting pattern. But I, I, I don't want to really get started on ballot design, because that could be all...
That's a whole hour.
That could be a whole hour in of itself.
I have files to show people, yeah.
Well, to your point, I shared with you, and we have a slide, we showed it once before, I think when Dot and Aaron were on, two years ago when Shanice was running, she observed some city council meetings, and it seemed as though ideas were being voted on and implemented without really a lot of forethought. So she came up with a system that would force councillors, if they followed it, to explore the decisions before you make them final. So she had, you know, a good list of things that, about like, what you're doing, how does it work, what is it going to affect, from an environmental point of view, from a...
You want me to list them?
Yeah, sure. And, and we have a...
Oh, it's right there, perfect.
Here, we'll just show it. And, and she has, she added some words to explain what's under, you know, included in all of these. But I'm pretty sure that even when city council makes very important decisions that can have far ranging consequences, there isn't any kind of procedure, anything like that, to explore, like, what's going to be the long-term impact, what's going to be the return on investment? Is it going to redress historic, you know, grievances? What's it going to do with the economy? You know, I, we've gone through, what, three, three or four periods of, like, an urban renewal kind of process in New London? And I've become convinced over the years that each one totally destroyed homeownership in the area where it operated. There was working class ownership in, like, the northern part of the downtown and East New London that was redeveloped or something, in the 60s and 70s.
Where the municipal lot is now?
Shaw's Cove, same thing.
Parking lot is now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, all the housing projects are now, and all the way to State Pier Road, Fort Trumbull also was about 50% owner occupied. And these were, very often, our two zones where you had working class people owning two family houses and either multiple generations living in the houses or having a rental. And that kind of housing, without being dubbed affordable, often is. And every time we get this infusion of outside money to tear down what's there because it's shabby, we get something that doesn't maybe meet the needs the way what we, it's, what it's replacing did.
Yep.
And by the way, I should mention, we probably only have about 10 more minutes that you could call in. We have probably about 15 minutes altogether. So if anyone wants to phone in, the number is 860-445-7499. And if you have questions, you know, you, you can share them. I'm sure we can think of our own things to say, talk about as well, but, but we welcome questions from the outside. And you might notice, Drew had put up the slide earlier, but we could see that again, there is going to be a debate on the 25th, Saturday, the 25th, at Church of the City, from 3:00 to 6:30 PM, for both, there will be a council debate and a Board of Ed debate. And I believe there will also be some time between the debates, maybe afterwards, for casual, you know, talking to candidates. And the League of Women Voters and Hearing Youth Voices are cosponsoring, and people are welcome to submit their questions directly to the League of Women Voters. They, they have some of their own questions, but they're looking for community questions as well.
Right, yeah. Email them in. And I believe it's a half an hour between the two. I think it's 3:00 to 4:30 for city council and 5:00 to 6:30 for Board of Ed. So there'll be a half an hour in between for schmoozing.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, and I'm looking forward to it. Think the same city councilman that didn't respond to the day blurb request is the same one that's not showing up to this debate, but we'll see, maybe we'll be pleasantly surprised.
Yep, the very same. I, I love, you know, debates, I love forums, I love meeting people that have questions and giving them a chance to, like, have face-to-face interactions, so.
Right.
I wouldn't miss it, I hope everyone comes, I love...
Challenge me, challenge us, ask us questions.
I want to be held accountable, I, you know, I have done my homework. If you've done your homework, you shouldn't be afraid of a conversation.
Right, exactly.
And it's actually really fun to talk to people you disagree with.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree.
But, you know, because not all the councillors, and I saw some other Board of Ed candidates, Republicans did not answer the questions on the newspaper, for the newspaper as well, which really surprised me. I don't really get why we wouldn't take advantage, as a candidate, of any time to communicate, but...
Yeah, there's just two of them, but, yeah.
But for council in particular, I think, you know, there's a YouTube channel, and you can watch city council meetings. And before voting, I really think it would be very educational to watch maybe the public comment and response to public comment. And the whole meeting you could watch, but how councillors respond to public comment...
Or lack thereof.
Yeah, well, yeah.
There's a lot of lack thereof, I just got to say.
You know, I started seeing, it used to be...
Not you, Jeff.
Everyone, the candidates would always come to these forums 15 years ago, it was considered really a must come. Even fairly popular candidates who couldn't make forums for personal reasons, sometimes were not elected because they weren't there, it kind of sent a message. And I started to see about five years ago, that the Democrats did not want to go to forums, or some of them didn't want to go to forums, that were held by, you know, more right-wing, more conservative groups in New London. But I don't know, it seems as though...
I don't think it's just right-wing groups, though, yeah, because Hearing Youth Voices also did a...
Yeah, well, it expanded to that. The first one that a lot, some didn't come to was the Neighborhood Alliance one in 2019. And they, I heard from some of the Democrats that, oh, that this group has an agenda and they're, you know, not really in good faith, but I, I didn't care, it was really a lot of fun to, you know, discuss things with people you disagree with.
Well, and it makes your argument stronger. I mean, that's the thing, too, is that if you put yourself in a bubble, your argument dissipates. If you talk to people, whether they agree or disagree with you, it can build your argument, you can see the other side, but sometimes, you know, you can stay true to your values. I feel like some people are just afraid that, oh, if I'm talking to somebody I disagree with, I'm, I'm giving up my values. That's not true, you know?
And, yeah, and I've seen, if you look at these videos, and the reason I recommend people look at them, is that some of the sitting councillors are very poor at interacting with the public. And these debates and forums, you don't have to be perfect, but you have to get, you know, it gives you practice.
Right.
If you go to all these debates, you're going to get better at it. And if you're going to serve, you should get better at it as much as you can before, before your term starts.
Agreed.
Yeah, you're only going to have a, a limited window to ask your question at council, too. So, you know, the debate, you know, is, is along the same lines. It's time constrained, it's across a bright, wide variety of issues, and like, that's kind of how council is, too.
Then you were going to say something earlier about Hearing Youth Voices?
Specifically, you know, I, I feel like elected officials stopped showing up at Hearing Youth Voices events around the same time that Hearing Youth Voices, you know, became stronger in their advocacy.
Right.
And I remember, you know, in, in the organization isn't the same as it was 10 years ago either. You know, and like, when you're dealing with youth and students, like, sometimes their arguments don't come out polished. And like, as, as an adult and as an elected official, it's kind of on you to be diplomatic. The idea of holding them to the same standards that you hold yourself to, or perhaps even higher standards in some of the cases, doesn't square with me, like, no, you're supposed to be gracious and diplomatic, and you're supposed to take your lumps. And you don't get to tell the kids that they're asking wrong.
Right, especially, like, I was thinking too, like, like, to your point, you know, with, with the youth coming in, in two city council meetings and, and expressing themselves, like, another thing I thought of when you were just saying that, is back when the flat funding was happening, and, you know, Passaro had discouraging remarks towards con college students for coming. And it's like, we should be encouraging the youth to come to the meetings and give their input, you know, whether it's con students, or Hearing Youth Voices, or anyone else, you know? It's like, they, they are the future. You know, obviously, as an educator, I feel that way, but, you know, especially like, if they're willing to get engaged. I mean, it's, it's, you know, I feel like this is a more recent phenomenon, where youth want to get engaged.
And I'll have to, have to tell you, I've gone to People's Budget meetings, and, which is youth, usually from Hearing Youth Voices and Fresh, they run very good meetings, they are run better than council meetings.
Yes, they are.
Doesn't surprise me.
So, there's...
The relationship with Hearing Youth Voices, you know, has been, like, it's a great example, it's a microcosm of all the things that are wrong with our interactions with the public. You know, I don't, I don't kid myself to think that they've loved every answer I've ever given them. And sometimes, you know, I've had criticisms of them, too, like, it's not, like, I, I love Hearing Youth Voices, and I boost them all the time. But after one debate, there was a question that rubbed me the wrong way, and I went to them and I was like, guys, you know, and I explained my reasoning, why like, I didn't, I didn't get where they were coming from. And we had a discussion about it. And we, you know, it, not just one time, but a couple of times. And like, I've watched them grow into this incredibly capable, organized machine, where the older students are, have become the adult advisors, and the younger students are learning from the older students. And like, this institutional knowledge of starting off with, like, them sort of learning to be diplomatic through trial and error, and learning what to ask for, and how the system works, and who to ask for what. And, you know, I've, I loved watching them grow into that. And now, yeah, they're part of this People's Budget coalition. And so like, they're teaching other orgs, other orgs are teaching them. And frankly, and I love the teachers, and I love the teachers' union, they got there first. The students led before the adults got there. Isn't that awesome?
Yep.
Like, nothing, nothing against the adults, but the students were there first.
Credit where credit is due.
And they have never wavered, they've been there for years, growing into this organization, so.
It's great. No, I love that we have it. Hearing Youth Voices is a very strong asset to our community, and same with People's Budget, for sure.
Yeah.
for sure.
Yeah, so we have four more minutes, and I have a question that will take more than that, but we'll just have to be brief. The national situation on so many fronts is...
Canned worms.
It is. What, do you have one or two thoughts on how our city can deal with this trickle-down austerity, this chaos, this authoritarianism? How can we protect ourselves?
I have one thought, and it's to do with immigration and the situation we're facing. I know, my family is a family that includes immigrants, and, you know, this, I've seen the immigration system firsthand, so I have a lot of thoughts on this one. But what I want out of my elected officials and my law enforcement officials right now, I think they need to communicate really clearly that, you know, we here in New London and broadly, we here in Connecticut are going to stand up and resist this federal overreach. And I don't mean not cooperate with it. I mean resist it. And that is to say, it is a crime to kidnap someone in the state of Connecticut. If you come here without a warrant and you take someone off the street without a warrant or probable cause, you have kidnapped someone in the state of Connecticut. And I don't care what color your uniform is, you should be arrested and stopped before people get harmed from your actions. Like, that is, you know, and I don't know if the Attorney General needs to get out in front and give everyone a permission structure to understand this. But whether he does or doesn't, doesn't excuse us at a local level from doing that. Like, I want leadership from our state leaders, but I'm not waiting for it. I want to see local leadership as well.
Okay, we just got the two-minute warning, so...
No, I mean, I agree with that, definitely. And I think that we should all be resisting ICE as much as possible if they ever come and they try to do what they've been doing in other communities. It's absolutely terrible. I do have to give credit to the school system. I know they get a lot of flack, but there was solidarity right away, immediately with the school system, including from the superintendent and the board and administrators, teachers. There wasn't one, at least vocal, person against what we were saying, which is, we're going to stand up for immigrant families. You know, if ICE does show up, we're going to protect them. We're going to turn them away, especially without a warrant, like you said. And we're going to make sure everybody knows their laws and knows how they can stand up because we are a community of immigrants. So, I mean, immigrants are amazing, and that what makes our town amazing and diverse and culturally flourished. So we really need to make sure that we come together. And I think that we are. And I don't think that there is a gap in that where they could get through. And I feel solidarity there, for sure.
Here, here.
Well, thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Lucian. I'm pretty sure we're out of time.
Yep.
But you'll have another chance to, you know, if you want to come to Williams Park, I know Jeff will be there. I know I'll be there. I don't know if Lucian will be there because, like...
Other stuff. It's busy right now. It's campaign season.
Yeah, it's a crazy season.
It's my first one, so I'm like, woo!
But definitely come to the debates.
Yes.
And learn as much as you can about the candidates. And you saw the nice pattern on the ballot. You can vote up to seven, whatever, make the pattern whatever you want.
And no matter what people say, it's important to do your own research. So don't fall for that propaganda. Look people up, research things, and I'll leave it there.
Okay. Well, thanks to both of you. And I'm not sure who's going to be on next week, but I'm sure it'll be campaign-related, so...
I'm sure.
We'll figure it out.
Thank you, Rana.
Thank you.
Thank you.